Because what's there? It's that's maybe they moved them.
Okay, we'd like to call to order the Anderson Township Zoning Commission meeting for Monday, April twenty second at five thirty. I'd like to first entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay. Second thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes of March twenty fifth. It does look like we have enough to approve those minutes. So we'd like to entertain a motion or any revisions to the minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the March twenty fifth, two thousand nineteen minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Could you go, please call roll? Thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
I'm staying.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes. Chair, before we go further, just wanna let you know that I did review the minutes of the forty-six pages, so I feel able to review the cases that were continued from last month.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. First thing on our agenda is a continuation of public hearing to discuss case one dash two thousand nineteen. Anderson, Mr. Drury, if you could please.
Yes, and just one housekeeping item for the continued cases, the three that were heard last month. All the testimony that was entered is, carries over, so no need to make repetitive statements from last month. All of that was entered into the record and will carry forward, so tonight we can just hear new information. The presentation will be that very similar. We'll briefly go over the PowerPoint, just to recap the slides, and then present any new information. So with that, and then the first case is a zone change. The next three cases are PUDs, so after the first case, then we'll swear those in wanting to give testimony for the PUDs. It's not necessary for a zone change. So this first case is case one, two thousand nineteen. Anderson, the applicant is Tom Davis of Buffalo Wings and Rings Real Estate LLC. On behalf of TP White and Sons and Felty Boys who are the property owners, location is at eighty-five oh one Beauchamp Avenue. The zoning, there are three different zoning districts on the site. It's E Retail, EPUD, which is a retail plan unit development, and C Residence and CPUD. C is a single-family zoning district. The request was a zone change, to change everything to EE, which is planned multiple residence. I'm sorry, EE Planned Retail, Planned Business Retail. For the purpose of constructing a corporate office building, and the office building has increased in size just slightly to twenty thousand four hundred square feet from last month. This was two-story with approximately one-story, twenty-six hundred to forty-three hundred square foot retail building in the front of the site toward Beauchamp Avenue. The tract size is just shy of two and a half acres, is a hundred and ninety-five feet of frontage on Beauchamp Avenue, and there are two parcels. One was the former Identity Hair Salon, and the second parcel is vacant. Again, the proposal is to construct a one-story building toward the front of the property, and a two-story in the rear of the property. So we won't go over the history of the case as far as the meetings that were held. This is the property map. So Beauchamp Avenue, this is the former Identity Hair Salon. This is Graders, which is under redevelopment, and Montgomery Cyclory. This is an area of the site in question. The topography is sloped slightly to the south. In the zoning map, the red is some form of retail zoning, whether it's straight retail or a planned unit development. The yellow is some type of single-family zoning district, and this blue here is planned office. So at the last meeting, last month, the applicant stated they have came, or had come up with a modified site plan to move the building further to the north. The previous, this office building right here, the previous plan had the building further to the south, closer to the residences on Sunmont, and there had been discussion with those residents of the preferred location. So the applicant pushed the building farther to the north, closer to the commercial uses on Beauchamp Avenue. It was also felt that the two-story, the bulk and the height of a two-story office building was not compatible with a two-story home, a single-family home, so that provided greater separation. It also provided more opportunity for buffer to the residences to the south. So the detention, a portion of the detention has been placed under the parking lot, and then there is above-ground detention to the south of the parking lot. There's also additional landscaping around the detention, parking again to the south of the building. The building now faces to the west, the front of the building faces to the west, and then there is still the retail office building toward the front of the property. These are the sample elevations of the site in question. And this was a cross-section or profile showing the difference in grade from Beauchamp Avenue to the residences on Sunmont, to show by moving the building closer to Beauchamp, what that may look like to the residences on Sunmont. Now I'll let the applicant go over in more detail some of these changes. These are just the site photos. This is looking east on Beauchamp Avenue. This is looking to the west, the former Identity Building, which would be removed from the site. This is looking to the south toward the rear of the site. This is in the back of Identity's parking lot, looking to the south. The residences on Sunmont. So we won't go over all of the findings. However, with the new site plan, staff did review for zoning resolution compliance, and there are several things that are not in compliant now that were in compliant with the previous plan, so we wanted to bring those to your attention. The first item is Article three point fifteen D two requires a thirty-five-foot setback to any boundary line of a tract that abuts a more restricted district. So the rear of Graders is Zone C Residence. So a thirty-five-foot setback is required to that property line, so this is the east property line. The applicant is proposing a ten-foot side yard in this area. Again, they're attempting to move the building farther away from the actual single-family residences, but in order for them to flip the building to the side, they are requesting a ten-foot side yard setbacks. The Article five point three D one D requires a ten-foot streetscape buffer. The applicant is requesting a six-foot wide streetscape buffer. They are required to dedicate additional right-of-way with this zone change, so in addition to the right-of-way, they are requesting just a six-foot wide versus a ten-foot wide streetscape. They are proposing a sidewalk, the sidewalk in the right-of-way, so that would leave six feet of landscaping outside the right-of-way. The next item, sidewalk, showing me the minimum design requirement for that agency. The applicant is proposing a five-foot wide sidewalk, and depending on its location, it would need to either be a seven-foot wide, if it is placed at the back of the curb, or with a two-foot lawn strip, it could be five feet of sidewalk in width. There was some confusion on the rear of the building. The applicant is proposing a garage for, a private garage for the owner, so in that area, we were unsure if a curb was proposed or wheel stops were proposed. With this new design, too, they have increased the number of parking spaces that are ten percent over the optimum. A hundred and six spaces are permit, are proposed, where eighty-four is the max that is permitted, so a variance would need to be granted for parking in excess of ten percent of the optimum number for those two uses. The site plan exceeds the maximum elimination that is permitted, so this is something that would need to be resubmitted to come into compliance or a variance granted. So with the changes, and as felt last, last month, in addition, we do feel that the proposed zone change is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The future land use identifies the area for general retail, and this is compliant with that future land use. We also feel like it's compliant with the goals of the Economic Development Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, and then the other goals of the Land Use and Development Chapter. The Beauchamp Plan also, it falls within Neighborhood Six. We feel that it is contemporary architecture, which is proposed, and that is what the Beauchamp Plan calls for this area. They are showing or identifying opportunities for cross-access through their parking area, and they are showing a consolidated driveway, just one driveway. Landscaping and a sidewalk is also proposed, which is consistent with these. The site planning, this was a large topic of discussion, whether an office building would be appropriate further to the south of the site or pushed up closer to Beauchamp. And with the proposed location, staff is of the opinion that yes, this is consistent with the design guidelines. It does provide adequate buffer in separation from the residential uses. Architecture, a simple plan was shown, elevation drawings, so if this does move forward, more detail would be needed on the style of the building to ensure its consistency with the architecture element, the design guidelines. A sidewalk is proposed, and again, the Economic Development Committee was concerned with appropriate buffering to the single-family. So staff is of the opinion the zone change should approve, be approved based off of the findings in your staff report, and I will put this back on the site plan if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. Mr. Lewis, any questions of staff?
Just was Graders informed of the moving closer to their property line? Just giving the same notification as everyone with the sign each?
Same, same notification. Again, with continued cases, we send out notification for the first hearing. We do not send out re-notification for the, for the next meeting, so, but sign has been up and they were notified originally, yes.
Okay. No other questions?
Okay, thank you. Ms. McBride?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. The photometric plan that's over, is that on the west property line, Paul, where it's?
There were several areas that were out of compliance.
Okay, but primarily?
Yes, so it, it was, it was in compliance to the southern property line, but since the rear, they're adjacent to residential on both sides, except for the small portion along Beauchamp Avenue, so those need to be a point-one-foot candles or less.
Okay. And then, is there a recorded cross-access easement with Graders and this site?
If, we would recommend that a condition be placed on that. I don't know if a formal agreement has been made with Graders yet to actually make that cross-access connection.
I have a little bit of concern, because if, if you came out of this site, if it was approved, I could see people wanting to turn left, and of course, that's one way in, south only on Grader's site, and these folks, if they go that way, are gonna have to go all the way around the Graders then to come out.
Yeah, I think signage would definitely be needed.
Yeah, as well as a stop on, on this property. And then, I was a little bit confused about the comment on the sidewalk, so if they did a five-foot wide sidewalk, would the two-foot lawn strip, would that count as their streetscape?
No, just, so their streetscape requirement is within that six feet of outside the right-of-way. They are proposing their sidewalk in the right-of-way, so ODOT requires a seven-foot wide sidewalk if it's up against the curb. If it's not up against the curb, then that two-foot of lawn strip, there needs to be two feet of lawn strip and then the sidewalk.
So that's ODOT's requirement?
Yes.
And that setback is actually after the, is post right-of-way dedication?
Yeah, yeah, their entire sidewalk would be within the right-of-way.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Including the two-foot, two-foot lawn strip.
Mr. Henson, any questions of staff?
Nope.
All right, thank you very much. Now, if the applicant would like to present their case, please step forward, state your name, address, and affiliation to the case.
Good evening. My name's Tom Davis, three nine six Ward, Corner Road is where our office is. What we have before you tonight is revised plan from last time, moving our building forward as indicated. We went back and looked at that, listened to the residents, and decided that we could actually move that with some slight modifications, variances on the side yard setback and the front yard on that, make it, make it work for both parties on that. Hopefully, the, the residents like this a little better than the, the building toward the back. Originally pulled it back, thinking that would give them a buffer between our parking and their houses, but they would like it the other way around, so we have moved it forward and we've worked that out. For the photometrics, though, we will revise that and get cutoffs on the lights if we need to, to get that all imposed on our parking area, so we don't spill over on side parking, or side properties. If you'll notice, we have put some of our storm drainage underground in the back, had to do that to make it work out, heavily landscaped the back to try to make it appealing to everybody on this end of it. The building's pretty much the same. Parking garage in the back is for our owners. They have some old antique cars, and they like those in there, and are just gonna keep those in there. So we did put customer parking in front of that, which can be moved, and put a manable sidewalk, so they can move the cars in and out as needed, but they don't move them very often. Easement can be granted, all, everything that the county has requested, you guys have accounted. We have no problem with that, and we'll comply with everything on that. So if y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
So it's, with the office, are the normal business hours eight to five, Monday through Friday?
Yes.
So the lighting should be no issue? You said the photometrics getting them into compliance?
Yes, we'll set the lighting where it's limited at night, just for security and all that, and of course, we just have it on during normal hours, eight to five, whenever we don't work on the weekends, or at least, we try not to work on the weekends.
Okay.
On that, so yeah, it'll be just a regular office building.
And can you explain a little bit about the, the parking variance? Why so many for a two-story?
The parking variance is, you know, we're a franchise restaurant company, so at times we have large groups of franchisees and managers and trainees come in, and they train. So at times, our office pool will grow, you know, the ten, twenty, thirty people may be in there at times just to train for a couple of weeks and all that, and that's why we moved from where we are and would like to come here, because we were running out of parking because of that reason. When they would come in, we would have to park all over the place, so that's just to accommodate that.
Are you, based on previous meeting sizes, is that what it's come up with, or using all the available space?
Yeah, we have, right now, about thirty-two employees and looking to grow, so we wanna make that. But like I said, we also have these training parties come in, and we needed to accommodate them also.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Thank you. Ms. McBride?
Thank you. You provided a section, which was great. I wanted to ask, what year are the trees shown at on the section?
Unfortunately, I cannot answer that question. My engineer got sick, and he's not here tonight, so.
Okay, I mean, I sincerely don't think they're at planting.
Yeah, but we're, we're gonna heavily landscape that. We understand the concerns of neighbors back there, and that's why we ended up with more trees, deciduous evergreen trees and all that, putting shrubs underneath them also to help the berm. I think they wanted the berm instead of a fence, so we'll do whatever we need to do on that end of it, to try to shade that from them and make it less obvious by there.
Well, I guess you may or may not know the answer to this then also. So you specified some plant material on the landscape plan, but there isn't any note about how tall, how big the plant material is at planting?
No, not on that. With their evergreens and some deciduous trees spelled out, I don't know that he put.
I mean, he gave some examples of, of plant material, but obviously, there's a big difference between a four-foot evergreen tree and an eight-foot evergreen tree. So, um, okay.
We can touch something out if you'd like to. If you wanna make them six-foot, we can do that. I don't know if you put anything on here.
The office building itself, how tall is it to the top of the feature?
I, I think it's twenty-seven feet right now. It's a two-story office building.
But it, but then the feature obviously goes above that.
The what?
The feature, the?
It's just a pair of football to hide any rooftop equipment and all that. I think you asked somebody else last time. It will be rooftop equipment, so it's hidden enough there out of the way.
Okay, so that was another of my questions then, is so you're not gonna see any of the roof-mounted equipment from any of the surrounding properties or the, or the public right-of-way?
No, we'll screen that.
And then you were explaining that you needed twenty-six percent more parking than the township would allow you to have, and you were saying you have thirty-two regular employees, and you're proposing the hundred and six parking spaces, and I understand you're gonna have training and so forth. I had a thought that there's twelve parking spaces across the rear there. If you were to lose those and push the buffer area more to the north, then you could increase the height of that berm over the three feet that's proposed, because a three-foot berm really isn't, isn't very tall.
We've proposed a six-foot berm.
Okay, maybe I, I read the toe foot wrong.
It's always been proposed as a six-foot berm, so.
Okay, well, we're just, we would have to make that a, um, at any rate, uh, let's see what else do I have. Signage, there's anything on signage here? Are you gonna have any freestanding signage?
We'll probably have some signage, but we'll meet all the code, excuse me, all the code on that. Probably just have one, you know, logo type sign on the front of the building. We might put a low mine sign at the front, just to say, this is where you turn to get into our offices, so that would probably be all we would need.
Okay. Those are the questions I have at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Henson?
With regard to the excess parking, are there any anticipated uses when you're not having trainings for that parking? Would you be storing any ancillary vehicles or?
Just vacant parking, but we will need it when we have training. And of course, like I said, we're, we're looking to be in here for a very long time, and we're looking to grow, you know?
Right.
And we have thirty-two employees, I believe, right now. You know, we, I've been working there thirteen years, so, you know, looking to grow. So it may double in the future with the training and all that. That's why we had that many in there. We were able to get that worked in there, and that's where the number.
But you wouldn't be looking to lease those to third parties or anything of that nature?
No, 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 they'd just be for, as needed for us.
Any updates or ideas on what would be used in that retail space yet, or is that still undefined?
No, we, we have not even technically put it out there to, to see yet, so we just want the availability to put some kind of small retail up there, and we don't have a clue yet what might even wanna go there.
Gotcha. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. I've got a couple of questions. It was brought up with the staff about cross-access easement with the Graders. Has that been approached with Graders, and is it, are they achievable? Because your site plan is heavily dependent on?
We're, we're amenable to grant whatever easement the township needs for that. Graders would, would, would we have to approach Graders for that?
We can help coordinate that, but ultimately, it would be, you know, Graders and Wings and Rings that we'd need to finalize.
We could approach them on that and all that, but I'd be delighted to do that, when you do that, to make that connection.
Yeah.
We're just trying to get the township what they want as far as cross, cross-access.
And then, again, I agree with Ms. McBride about the height of the plantings and all that would have to be very well-defined, because I read the grading plan very similar. It's a two-to-three-foot high berm, so you know, adding landscaping on top of that to screen the residences is very important.
No, we can definitely set five, six feet, whatever y'all would like to do on that. We'll, we'll meet that requirement.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, with that, thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, anyone like to speak opposed to it? Okay. Again, please state your name and address and affiliation to the case, and remember, you know, all the testimony that was given at last commission meeting is still relevant today, and will be part of this decision.
Okay, I wasn't at the last meeting. My name's Terry McQuerry. My address is eight five one eight Sunmont Drive. I am one of the residents that's immediately impacted by this. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to let us express our concerns today. I reviewed the report in advance of coming today. It was posted on the website, the summary was, and we have some concerns over it. On the Hamilton County Soil and Water section of it, it states standard review comments, which it doesn't really go into telling us what that means. And from our perspective, you know, it was shared at the last session, that we have storm water problems, and that's still a concern. Under the zoning resolution compliance, it states development is compliant with the zoning resolution, with the exceptions. We weren't clear about the thirty-five-foot boundary, and so does that mean that it's the building piece, the thirty-five-foot, or the whole concept of what's being done? It's just the building? Okay. Because when Cincinnati Auto was attempting to purchase the adjacent lot, they were told that they had to keep a substantial distance from the proposed parking lot in the residential area with maintaining the existing trees, which was like twenty-five to thirty-some feet during those meetings, and we were sort of curious of how this situation is different, that we can eliminate all the existing trees here with a natural look. In addition, the information provided on the proposed design stated that there were six parking stalls needed for the proposed garage. We weren't clear about that, why someone would need six additional stalls for that. Then, again, with the parking spaces, there were a hundred and six spaces being requested, and it stated that there was eighty-four that was supposed to be permitted at maximum. We would like to voice our objection to anything additional if this does get approved. Also, the lighting exceeds maximum, and we'd like to voice our opinion again, that we do not agree with any additional lighting, that that impacts, because our bedrooms are on the backside of our houses, and we would get all that additional light coming in to us. Under the goals of Anderson on the economic development, we agreed that, you know, we wanna see the township improve, but we do respectfully disagree that the protection of abutting the residential properties through sensitive site planning and buffering and architectural design has not been achieved overall. We're losing all of our natural backyards that we currently enjoy, and we, we would ask that you would consider not approving the residential piece of it being zoned over to a business. So, I guess my time's up.
All right, thank you.
Try to squeeze it in?
Yes. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Linda Goggle. I was here last month. I live at eighty-five hundred Sunmont, so I'm the house in the cul-de-sac, right on the, right on the edge of the property. I'm right behind the bicycle shop. And just a couple extra comments from last month that I wanted to make with this new design is, I, I had a lot of question about the training sessions, what that actually meant. I know they said they're not open on weekends. Would the training sessions ever spill over onto a weekend? And then if you have a training session where you have that many additional people, even if it's during the, the week, I mean, I don't work every day, I'm home in the summer, would that mean people will be taking breaks and congregating in large areas outside in that parking lot during, you know, during that training time? There's, there's a lot of noise that comes from Beauchamp, and we're losing, you know, we're losing all of that buffer. And so it, it will definitely impact what, where we live, because we are in such a condensed area. And we realized when we built there that we were in this condensed area, but we thought we had protection with it being zoned residential behind us. So I guess the thing that I'm asking is that you please remember the residence that you already have, and we have been longtime Anderson residents. We've all lived on this street for a long time, and while we would have no objection to them moving in and being our neighbors, they seem very willing to wanna cooperate, but we would ask that they do it on the business portion, you know? Build your corporate office on the business portion, and leave out the, the money-making part on the front, the rental part on the front, and, and give us that buffer between our residences and a business. So, thank you. I really appreciate it. I really appreciate it. Appreciate you considering that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's Ken Chow. I live at 8510 Sunmont, directly behind it where the letter A is, that's where my house is. I am totally against the extra parking spaces, like the parking spaces in the back where it goes up against our house. I mean, why can't we eliminate those parking spaces? I mean, why not make our buffer bigger that way? I mean, appreciate everything you've been doing for us and working with us, you know, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Tependra Sinha and I'm a resident of 8538 Sunmont Drive. And my house is right behind the graders. And I want to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to, to voice our concern for the expansion. There are several things I want to say first. The first is that we are concerned about the deterioration of the quality of life for us in the resident, in our neighborhood. Couple of things. One is our, based on the graders expansion right now, we are seeing our backyard is heavily waterlogged. We have spent several thousand dollars 10 years back fixing the water logging, but it's no use right now. So I do not have any confidence on any such expansion, how it will reduce runoff in our backyard. So far, I have not seen any, any hydrological model of expected runoff or overflow from the builders. And also as residents, we have, I believe we have the right to have green space and see it's not being destroyed. The sustainability of the green space is not destroyed by this kind of expansion. Then, as far as trees are concerned, I always think having a parking lot increases the, the amount of concrete space, so that will increase significant runoff. And also, it will increase the heat, the amount of heat that radiates from the, from the ground. These are basically common things that parking lot does. And also, there will be the light lamp posts, which will be higher than the trees they are proposing probably. So we will always get significant amount of light in the night, which our bedrooms are in the back, facing the backyard. So that disturbs our good night rest. And also, the, the clearance of the buffer when our, when our house have a 30-feet clearance in the front from the access road and a 12-feet between a single-family homes, I, I still believe that, that 35-feet from the end of the building, a buffer space is definitely not significant. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Vicki Corpus from 8524 Sunmont. My husband and I live in the lot diagonal, right there. So it is our, our bedrooms will look out to this, just slightly to the side. I have two comments and a question for you very quickly. One is, he made mention that only the security lights would be on in the evenings and the weekends, but there are deer back there frequently. There have even been coyotes back there in the past. There's a lot of animals back there. And so if they're set to come on per movement, if they're keyed that way, as a lot of business security lights are, they will be coming on and off regularly, as in probably every hour. So it's not like they're just going to go off and, and, you know, after eight o'clock at night in the winter, it's going to be dark. Because of the amount of wildlife back there, they will constantly be going on and off is my prediction, if that's the kind of, you know, if they use motion detector lights. Secondly, you know, if the plan for this quarter of Beachmont was general retail, I don't really understand and will never kind of agree with an office building fitting that. An office building is not retail, so I just, I guess that's just my protest. I apologize. I don't see how it fits, except for the token part in the front. My question is about the water. I was a little bit late, so I apologize, but what, where is the detention pond? What happened with that? Am I allowed to ask that?
Well, do we want to take questions or just wait and let the applicant come back up?
We can...
We'll let the applicant come back up and address any questions as sort of a closure before we discuss amongst the commission?
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Raji and I live at 8538 Sunmont Drive. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to voice my concern. Now, I have seen that you have the runoff from the Beachmont. They do have a stormwater system. When they're building the graders or whatever development will come in the future, why they don't have the runoff to the stormwater drainage system in the Beachmont instead of the retention pond? And then whatever overflow it comes to our backyard, because our backyard is badly affected right now. So that's all I have to tell you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Seeing no hands? Oh, yes, sir.
Hello, my name's Jerry McQuerry. I live at 8518 Sunmont Drive. This is a lot right, totally right in back of the, my wife spoke a little minute ago. Concerned about the buffer. He's wanting to tear out all the trees. We have like 50-foot trees in the backyard. And by planting new trees and even putting any type of landscaping up will not cover the, the sound and the nature of what we already have. So I'm very concerned about that. And also the retention pond, this holding pond, just like the lady was saying, it seems like they can reroute this water in these retention ponds to a main line instead of coming back, just draining back toward our residence and creating more water and wet and mud and mosquitoes. We had, we had a problem with mosquitoes there about eight years ago, West Nile virus because of laying water, which was brought up. So I don't know if you're aware of that or not. But all these problems, all of this will make it worse. So this is what I'm thinking, so. Anything that could keep the trees and keep the, the water runoff in a different direction will help the whole area. Health-wise.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Seeing no hands? If the applicant would like to come up and address any of the questions or any of the statements that have been made to the commission?
I think one of the questions was on the lighting. I thought we'd answered that. We will make sure all the lights are turned into the interior of the parking lot and all that. And the only thing we will have on at night will be just security-type lights. They will not be on photometrics, so no animals or anything going to set those off. They will just be nightlights to give enough light for security around there. As far as the storm drainage goes, we have put a lot of it underground under the parking lot. That's costing us additional money. There is part of it in a retention pond, which is cheaper and easier to do, but that will hold the water. And this water will not be released any faster than what the county allows. It will not be any more than what is there now. We cannot release it any faster than that. It will be less than what they're getting now because it will hold the water and release it at a slower rate on that. And that's kind of requirement, so we have to meet that. I can't tell exactly what the rates are, but it will have to be met before they allow us to do this. And that's why we did that. We pushed that back there to screen that, heavily landscaped it, put a buffer up there to try to appease and make this work out for both parties. That's why we moved the building forward. We have the buffer back there. We have some landscaping. We have some hedge, a hedge back there. All this to try to, to try to work this out. So if there's any other questions, I would like to answer those.
Okay. Commission, any other questions?
I believe there was a question about the training on the weekends and the breaks and the noise level. Would we be training on the weekends?
No, we don't train on the weekends.
And what about during the day when breaks and different things? Is there a, an area where they would go? Would they be inside, outside?
Oh, breaks?
Breaks during the training.
Thinking about cars, car breaks. Yeah, there'll be an outside, I think, on top of the garage. We'll put a patio on that to have outside eating, break areas and all that. It's going to be back there at the building, not in the back of the property. It'll be up around the building.
On top of the garage at the back of the...
That was one of the things we were thinking about, was putting a patio on top of that garage.
Did the plan show that? Paul, is there anything in there? I don't recall seeing that.
I don't, no, I don't know if that was clear.
It's just a thought we had to keep everything away from the back of the property and not more toward the building.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else from commission?
Yeah, I just, I had one question I'd forgotten to ask you. The photometric plan, does that include the wall packs on the building?
Yes.
Okay. And then I'm just going to pitch one more time my idea about losing those 12 parking spaces. And, I mean, if you've only got 32 regular employees, you're probably not going to have 70 people at a training session, are you, in addition to your employees?
To be honest with you, our 10-year plan is to double the size, more than double the size of our present restaurant, number of restaurants. And we have 55 right now across the country. And we're looking at more than double that in the next few years. So yes, we probably will need that many change. But I can lose those 12 there, but I don't know that we'll gain that, that much, other than just lose 12 parking spaces there. But we can lose those. I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Henson, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, open discussion amongst the commission. Mr. Henson, we'll start with you.
I don't really have much to add this time around during the continuation. I think Ann's recommendation or proposal of losing the 12 parking spaces is kind of consequential to developer, to the developer. And I appreciate his willingness to consider that. It seems as though the, the runoff will be well mitigated and I, it seems as though it's actually going to improve the present conditions back there for the existing residents. I also, I feel that it was a pretty wise move to place the office space in between the residential and the retail, considering office typically is a much lower intensity of use. So I feel like that is relatively more compatible with the residential adjacent to it rather than the retail with, you know, much more regular car activity. All in all, those are sort of my observations at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McBride?
Yeah, I guess if, if the applicant were to remove those 12 parking spaces, that would pick up another 20 feet of buffer area, which would allow them to push the detention basin then to the north and provide an additional 20 feet of, of landscape area and take that basin 20 feet further north of the, of the residence. I would also like to see a number of things specified that maybe aren't so clear here on the plans in terms of the, the size of the plant material, the size of the berm, and some, some other items that I think aren't clear on the plan.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I agree with the reductions on the parking. I believe it still puts them beyond the 10% variance. If they lose 12, it puts them at 94. They should be at 84 plus or minus 10%, right, Paul? 10%?
84 was the plus 10%, so that was the max.
Oh, it was. So they're 10 over still? Okay. I believe there's more work to be done in the easements or the, the right-of-way with the, with graders and with Montgomery that has not been cleared up yet. And then with the, I did not see it in my notes about the, the patio on top of the garage without seeing that. I have some concerns, so.
All right, thank you.
But Paul, I don't see that, I'm probably missing this, the variance on the number of parking spaces. Do we need to modify that?
If... Yes, it, it does need to be added in.
As a variance?
Yes.
So anyone would like to make a motion? Okay, Ms. McBride?
I was just going to say, I think in our staff report, we just recommended approval of certain variances. The other ones we didn't include because we didn't, we didn't have a recommendation on those, I guess, or favorable recommendation. So yes, the one for the parking spaces over the optimum would be Article 5.3F as in Frank 1, A, lowercase a and B. Just one comment on that, too. It's just, so we had a range for the front building, square footage range. That may change those numbers slightly also, but just because we don't know if it's a retail or an office building and we had a range of square footage. So that's just something to...
But it's a contiguous slot and all the...
Exactly.
...counted.
Yes, yes.
So how would you phrase that then to allow you flexibility with regards to that use?
I think they actually use the maximum because the office would be...
Okay, so if I, if I use that maximum, then that's...
Right. They had a... I'm sorry. So they had a, no, they used 3,775 square feet for their retail space. So that was actually less than what we had in our... So originally, we said 2,600 to 4,300, so then they, they used the mid-range of 3,775. So I, I think you're safe.
Okay, with that, I would then make a motion on zone change case 1-2019 Anderson Buffalo Wings and Rings for the property at 8501 Beachmont Avenue. And I would recommend that to the trustees that we approve the proposed zone map amendment based on staff's report in terms of compliance with the adopted plans of the township and that the approval be based on the staff conditions 1 through 8 with the additional change to number 2, where it says that a landscape plan in accordance with the zoning resolution and with the condition number 3 below or as specified, and I'll come back to that. And then with the conditions recommended by staff and with the additional following conditions, that signage is to be provided on the subject property with a stop sign at the graders, at the eastern property line with a stop sign and a no-left-turn sign and that the connection be made to the greater site. That landscape material be planted at evergreens at eight feet in height, that shade trees be planted at two and a half caliper inches, and that shrubs be planted at three gallons. That all of the HVAC equipment mounted on the roof be screened from view of adjacent property owners and the public right-of-way. That the proposed mound be a minimum of six feet as represented by the applicant. That the building be a maximum height of 27 feet. That the 12 southernmost parking spaces that head into the south be eliminated and that the proposed detention basin be shifted then to the north. and that the buffer area be expanded by the 18 to 20 feet of the eliminated parking space and additional landscaping be added to that area. That the lighting plan include the illumination generated from the proposed building wall packs. That the approval is also inclusive of the variances recommended by staff from Article 3.15 D2 and Article 5.3 D1D as well as one as a variance from Article 5.3 F.1A and B, which would allow for a total of 94 parking spaces on the site.
The 27 feet, is that including enclosures with any equipment?
That's what the gentleman said to me, that it was 27 feet to the top of that feature, which he added to screen the HVAC equipment.
Any questions of recording that? May I have a, anyone like to second the motion?
I'll second.
Do you please call roll? Mr. Henson?
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Okay, with this, you know, the next three cases are quasi-judicial hearings, which will require swearing in if you plan to give any testimony either for or against. So, if you are looking to speak to the commission, I ask you to please rise and raise your right hand. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth and whole truth and all case, or all information presented is truthful to the best of your knowledge? Okay, thank you very much. With this, next to, there's also some information that we need to pass along to the audience. First, I'll outline the procedures the commission will follow in hearing to deciding this matter. Under the zoning resolution, our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees and then to the Court of Common Please. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission, like the previous case. Because this is a quasi-judicial proceedings, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in a zoning resolution. We do not want to appear opinions dis facts. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in and being subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application. The applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witnesses who testify before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case to its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify, one at a time, after being recognized by the chairperson. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chairperson. If anyone in opposition is represented by attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As stated previously, all persons wishing to testify, whether for or against the application, may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience may, must come forward to the podium after being recognized, speak into the microphone and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to three minutes unless a commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is to be directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new, non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. And with that, we've already sworn anyone that would like to give in. And we'll turn this case number 2000 P, or PUD, case 4-2019 PUD over to Mr. Drury to provide staff comments. Thank you. The applicant is Patrick Gunning, Gunning Family Properties Preferred Land Development LLC on behalf of Gunning Family Properties, who is the property owner. Location is at 7488 Clough Pike and the current zoning is A2 residence and B residence. The request is for PUD application residential to allow 19 single-family lots on 6.059 acres with 28% open space. A little more detail on the proposed development, again, 19 single-family lots, 4.307 acres developed and 1.752 acres undeveloped, which equates to 28% of open space. The minimum lot size is proposed at 6,000 square feet. Front yard setback at 25 feet, side at five and rear at 25 with the minimum lot width at 50 feet. The case was continued last month with a motion to continue the case in progress for additional information on a joint maintenance agreement with the lake, reconsideration of the setbacks on the northwest adjacent parcels, a geotechnical study of the soils and analysis of the potential traffic issues. Other items that were discussed and we requested from the applicant included stormwater detention and runoff buffering the adjacent residential areas, or I should say additional information for stormwater detention runoff, buffering the adjacent residential areas and identification of trees that will be remaining or removed. So, we'll just run through the slides real quick. This is the site. So, this is Clough Pike here. Wolf Angle is just off of the slide to the east. There's a lake that is shared by three property owners. This is the aerial of the site. There was formerly a house that had been removed, as well as a detached garage that had been removed. This is the topography of the site in question. It's steep topography from Clough Pike and up on the, there is a slightly more level area to the top of the site in question. This line here delineates A2 zoning to the north and B zoning to the south. This is the proposed subdivision layout, again, just a cul-de-sac street with 19 lots. These lots were the lots that the zoning commission requested an additional setback to the adjoining properties. To the north is the Bloomfield Hills neighborhood. So, it was requested that additional setback and that has been identified on a revised site plan. This is the layout with the topography. Floor plans were also discussed and elevation drawings, so sample elevation drawings were submitted. This is one of the sample elevations. This is the second sample elevation. These are just the site photos, looking east on Clough Pike toward Wolf Angle. This is looking west toward Five Mile. Looking at the current drive, the proposed road would be just off of the slide there. Looking at the intersection again with Wolf Angle. This is up on, on top of the site, looking back toward Clough Pike. This is Clough Pike here, Wolf Angle is off of the distance. This is one of the adjacent homes that's not part of the Bloomfield Hills neighborhood. It's just, just on site, on top of the site. This is one of the more substantial trees on the site, however, it's smack dab in the middle of the site. So, that tree would not be preserved. These are some of the trees looking off to the east, to southeast. This is the lake that is shared by the other two property owners. This is looking at one of those houses that shares the lake. So, we won't go through the staff findings. They are the same that were discussed at the last meeting. Did you have any questions on any of the updated materials? There was a geotech, or soils study that was submitted that is part of your pocket. Again, the elevation drawings and sample floor plans of the homes, there is an increased setback. We did not receive a maintenance agreement for the lake, although I understand the applicant is working on that and I'll let them speak to that issue. And I think, I'll just let the applicant explain any of their new material or go through any of their new material.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. Any questions of staff? Mr. Henson?
No.
Ms. McBride?
Yeah, just two questions. So, I understand these are just sample building elevations, but we didn't receive anything that would be, say, going to covenants or anything that would say, you know, they're gonna be 60% ripper stone, any kind of, any kind of commitment to that. These are just samples. They could be just...
I think the applicant will speak to that.
Okay. And then with regards to, did we receive anything documenting what was gonna go into those buffers or existing trees that were to be maintained?
There, there is language on the site plan.
It says 10-foot undisturbed buffer, but we don't know what's in that buffer.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Mr. Lewis, any questions of staff?
No questions.
Alright, thank you. With that, if the applicant would like to present their case to the commission? Again, please state your name and address and affiliation to the case.
I'm Bob Roethert with Abercrombie &amp; Associates, 3377 Compton Road, 45251, representing the owner and developer, Pat Gunning, who's also here along with the proposed builder to answer any questions that the board may have. I'm gonna talk about some of the technical things. I'm gonna bring Pat up to talk about the maintenance agreement because he's been dealing with the neighbors on that. As far as the setbacks, as Paul stated, we increased the setback on Lot 12 from a 10-foot side yard setback to a 35-foot rear yard setback. So, that meets the maximum, I guess, setback that would be required in the adjoining zoning for the lots on our, on our development. That would be lots 11, 12, and 13 all have a 35-foot setback from adjoining properties now. As far as the geotechnical study, just wanted to read one line from that on page four where it talks about the preliminary grading plan. It hears to our general slope recommendations and no modifications to grading plan are warranted at this time with respect to slope stability. That's, that's from Alton Woods Exal's report. They will be reviewing the final grading plan as well and making any recommendations to Hamlin County Public Works and Sol and Water as far as that's concerned.
Is that on?
Is this not on?
I think, I think it's just...
As far as the existing lake, I just wanted to talk about some, some of the technical things on the existing lake itself. Our site really does not drain hardly anything into that existing lake. Our site will be tributary to a, an underground stormwater detention system along Clough Pike. The existing lake right now only has about a four or a six-inch overflow pipe along with a weir overflow. So, on heavy rains, the, the water just rushes out of the lake over the overflow and has caused some fairly severe erosion issues down from the, from that overflow. With the proposed subdivision plan, the construction drawings, we will be looking at installing some type of an overflow structure in the lake that will more control the water on those heavy rains and pipe it down to the, the bottom of the swale and install riprap. That will hopefully help control the, the, the speed of the water and the flow as it comes out of the lake. Right now, it, it comes out pretty much uncontrolled on a heavy rain. Like I said, over the weir and, and is causing some, some severe erosion. So, that's, that's the plan as far as the lake is concerned. Like, like I said, right now, there's only a, a six-inch overflow pipe, which obviously on a heavy rain cannot carry much water at all. Concerning the identifying the trees that are gonna be removed, we're in the process of doing an as-built survey, but, you know, right now, this is a preliminary grading plan. We don't have a final grading plan yet because we only have final survey information yet. We will be saving as many trees as possible that are not within a building footprint or required to be removed for grading. Obviously, trees are expensive to remove, so, so the intent would be to save as many trees as possible on the site that are not impacted by building footprints or, or grading. We did also submit a traffic, not a traffic impact study, but a site distance study for the location of the entrance off of Clough Pike that does meet the requirements of the Hamlin County Engineer for Site Distance into the subdivision. I think that might cover most of the technical issues. I wanted to bring Pat up to talk about the maintenance agreement that's in process on the, the lake itself. Be glad to answer any questions that the commission has.
Okay. Commission, any questions of the speaker? Ms. McBride?
Bob, just a couple of questions. Do you need anybody's approval to modify the drainage off of the lake? I mean, it's owned by multiple parties. Is that something, because it's gonna be done on this property, that can just be done? Or does it require the approval of the other owners of portions of the lake, I guess, is what I'm asking?
I might like Pat to address that, too.
We'll bring, we'll bring that one back. I got a couple more. The site distance study, was that done, it was done 40 miles an hour, it was done unposted? It wasn't, you didn't do a radar study?
No.
Okay. And then, is that a, is, is that a basin? What is that between 12 and 13 on the grading plan? Is that like a little mound or?
I think it's just grading lines where it drops from one elevation down.
Yeah, there's like a circular feature there in the, in the grading lines? I don't know, maybe it's an...
Oh, it's probably just a contour line, an existing contour line.
Maybe it's an existing one.
Yes.
And then, will there be, would there be any retaining walls used on the site?
There's none proposed at this point.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay, that's all that I had.
Mr. Lewis or Mr. Henson, any questions of the... Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Pat Gunning. I live at 8375 Eagle Ridge Drive, 45243. I have been working on a lake maintenance agreement and we've made four plus, actually five revisions to it. So, we're back and forth and we are in agreement for the most part. It is currently not signed by any of us at this point in time. However, we, I think, generally agree that how we're going to ensure the lake with, with insurance policies, how we're going to split the expenses, what we're going to, how we're gonna identify the functionality of the lake and the recreation of the lake, the maintenance of the great, the lake and if in the event that a party sells the successor and then the voting rights. So, it's all identified. I've made copies of the current... Would you like to have a copy of that, lake maintenance agreement?
I think we could, you know, distribute that.
Sure.
Whether it's more of an agreement between the homeowners and the property owners, but just to show there's something in the, in the works would be helpful.
Anne, to answer your question, there was a pool there. And when they demoed the homes, I believe the, the pool was, the indentation from the pool was there.
And then the question about the outlet structure that was discussed?
So, the, I think we're all in agreement that, that the six-inch pipe is not enough. We don't own the majority of the 10-foot easement that's coming down right through the center of, of the creek bed. that's coming down right through the center of, of the creek bed there. And when it does overflow, it, it, it is causing some erosion. So, I think as a good neighbor, and we've identified that it's just, it's not large enough. And when it, if you look at the far right of the, of the lake, that's where it spills over and there's tremendous amount of erosion there. And it's really not on, on the property that I currently own. It's really more on Essendon Dewey's property. But I feel like as, as a, as a one-third lake owner, that we should definitely do something about it, especially while we have construction equipment on site and we can do that fairly easily. The, the dam is, it's too low. So, we're, we're proposing to raise the dam and then put a correct way to actually utilize the lake as some sort of detention. So, it, it can raise a foot before the overflow on the, on the lake starts to take, starts to take effect. Any other questions in regard to that?
Mr. Lewis, any questions?
Just in regards to the, the agreement, is your, although it's not signed, are you through five iterations? Are you close to?
I, I...
You can certainly speak for yourself.
I, I believe that we are. I, I think, you know, the, the neighbors, I think, quite possibly, and I would kind of be in their position too, are using it as a tool. And it's, you know, I understand that. That makes sense. They're, they oppose the project, so.
Ms. McBride, any questions?
Thank you. So, just in quick skimming this, one of my questions was, would the residents of this new development then have the right to use the lake? And just in skimming it very quickly, yes, for specific activities. No boats with engines, kids wearing light jackets, but only the portion of the property of the lake that belongs currently to you. So, how do you, how do you know where that property line is in the lake?
Well, we do know where it is in the lake, so to speak. However, this agreement is a 12-month agreement. So, in 12 months, we can, we can review this at any time, but it's an agreement that we are all agreeing for a period of 12 months. And for the 12 months from start of the project of this, or when this gets signed, for 12 months, none of my residents will be fishing, boating, swimming, other than looking at it, that's all they can do. So, that'll be in our HOA document, that they cannot fish on the property. The other two can. They're, it's their property. They can do what they want. In my HOA, they will not be allowed to fish.
So, they really can't use the lake then?
They can't use the lake. They can look at it.
So, it's not really usable open space then?
It's not usable currently, no. I mean, it is, the two neighbors use it all the time. They fish on it, they, they boat on it. My residents are not going to fish on it or boat on it or swim in it.
Okay. And then, talk to me a little bit about what kind of buffering you're, you're looking at or existing to, I mean, all we've got is this 10-foot undisturbed strip. My experience is that even with construction fencing, 10 feet goes to four feet and sometimes goes away altogether. How do, what's in that 10 feet? And are you proposing to supplement that or?
What's currently in the, that 10 feet, my belief is, is there's heavy trees. Are you referring to the back of 12 and 11?
13, yeah.
And the side of 13?
Mm-hmm.
Those are all tree lined. That, that, if you were to pull up a, pull up a satellite picture, see all the trees on the...
I mean, if you're, if there's, if there's trees in that 10 feet and you're, you're grading and doing construction, you're going to be into their root system.
You know, I, I don't know if, because those are going to be 35-feet setbacks, 11 and 12, we're, we're not going to disturb those that are right on the line in 10 feet of the property line.
Well, 13, you've got grading actually going almost into that 10-foot no disturb line.
On the side of 13, yes, but not 11 and 12. So, on 13, more than likely, we will add an evergreen row of trees there.
But we don't know that. I mean, we, we don't have that.
Well, you know, if, I guess, and I'm, I'm fairly new at this, so I didn't think it was a requirement between two residential areas to have buffers in trees. Is that, I mean, is that a requirement? If it's a requirement, by all means, we'll do it.
Well, it's, this is, you're, you're asking for a PUD and the PUD is a series of trade-offs and this commission has some latitude.
Tell me what you'd like to see and we'll do it.
I think that's all the questions I have, thanks.
I'm not, I'm sorry to be, I'm not being smart, but.
Thank you. Mr. Henson, any questions of the, this applicant?
No, not right now.
In the previous meeting, they talked about three-story houses. Was that with the walkout, two-story with the walkout or?
Oh, yeah, if there is a walkout.
And would those be on the ones with the steep slope coming up the hill?
To the left as you're going up.
Okay, thank you.
Got some questions concerning the exterior materials. You know, what is going to be in the covenants of the development that, you know, restricts or defines the percentage of each exterior material and what the expectation is?
So, every home will have hardy or stone or brick. That, there's no vinyl on that. It might look it, but there's no vinyl. There won't be any vinyl on any of the, any of the homes.
And then, going back to the question about the outlet structure, I mean, it was talked about, but is that going to be a shared cost with all the owners of the lake or is that, you know?
Yes.
Okay. And then, you know, how is this 12-month agreement going to be transferred to the new property owners when they purchase their houses? You know?
It'll, it'll be, it'll stay with the HOA.
Okay, so it'll be HOA sort of requirement?
Will be the owner.
And then the renegotiation of said agreement after 12 months will be the HOA?
It'll be the HOA president.
With the adjacent person, okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing no hands, we will open the discussion into anyone opposed. So, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Reed. I'm an attorney with Strauss Troy. My address is 150 East Fourth Street, Suite 400, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45202. I'm here tonight on behalf of Jim and Monica Essendon Dewey, who reside at 7485 Ginger Lane, Carl and Christine Lipaswitch, who reside at 7487 Ginger Lane, and James and Elizabeth Caddy, who reside at 7461, 7463 Ginger Lane. So, just to place them, they are what I would call the northerly property owners and the easterly property owners. So, we're here today as, as a result of a continuation, which was suggested by the zoning commission. And we were asked to work with the developer on a number of issues. That included reasonable transition or buffering from the existing properties to the proposed development as well as a reconsideration of some of the setback limits, side, rear, et cetera, additional geotechnical plans, traffic plans, as well as a lake management agreement, a draft of which is now in front of you today. However, since that request from the commission, the developer and my clients remain quite far apart on their concerns as far as we feel. First, that agreement before you is not final. We would purport that there are actually several more issues that we need to work through. We wouldn't call it, we're going to sign it tomorrow. There are still negotiations that need to take place, which I think is a very important part of what is presented again to you here today. Secondly, the revised plans that have been submitted show, in our opinion, what is very little effort to address those concerns that were brought forth at the previous meeting. We're still looking at, you know, reductions of 29 to 40% at, at a minimum. That's when you take into consideration the B zoning versus A2. Additionally, we still do not have any landscaping plans or buffering plans. As Ms. McBride brought up, it is hard to know what that is going to look like. There are, you know, a lot of mature trees there. It would be nice to understand what we're going to look at. And I, you know, a little bit earlier, we heard that these are all preliminary plans. We're going to go into final plans. I think we would have a lot more comfort seeing some final plans. And, and as far as the trees goes, you know, they're going to keep the trees that are not in the buildable area. But I ask you, what is not considered a buildable area with 19 lots going into these, this, what is a buildable space? You know, about three acres of what is buildable. They're going to take out the remainder of the trees. There will hardly be any left. Third, the geotechnical plans that were submitted were done previous to the last hearing and we do not feel address the concerns about slippage and landslides you heard at the last meeting. And I, and I heard that there was a site study, but I did not see that on the website. Perhaps it was overlooked. So, at this point, we felt as if there were no traffic studies submitted a concern that was brought up in the past. And quite frankly, we, we felt that the commission heard us on March 22nd. We felt the developer heard us on March 22nd. But we come to you today, you know, disappointed at the status of where we sit today. There's just, there still feels as if there's a lot of outstanding questions and issues that we would like to have answered. So, at this point, we remain in opposition of the plan for the same reasons addressed on March 25th. And I will not belabor those points. I promise I won't stand up here for another 20 minutes. But I do want to emphasize one point. This PUD as revised simply remains inconsistent with the Anderson Township's comprehensive plan. This area is currently designated for single-family homes. And what you have here today before you is single-family clustered homes. If this is approved, the setbacks in lot sizes are in complete stark contrast from the surrounding properties, not, not only on this side of Clough Pike, but across and, and just anywhere near this development. And as confirmed by the zoning staff at the last hearing, the calculation of the number of homes permitted on this lot includes the open areas as well as the space that will be dedicated for the right-of-way. And using the developers' own numbers, which were included on the upper left-hand corner of the revised plans, you are left with 3.7 buildable acres. And that is little more than half of the original acreage that is here today. I think it's 6.5 or 6.05. So, again, even if you zoned it as B, the entire parcel, B being the more relaxed zoning, you're looking at maybe 15 homes, not 19. And so, if you permit 19 homes, this would be permitting single-family clustered housing, which would be in contravention of the comprehensive plan and against Ohio law, quite frankly. And so, I do not want to, again, berate the issue any further. I just want to remind the commission that these are variances of a 29 to 40% reduction at a minimum. That's a minimum. And this development is not only inconsistent with the surrounding properties, but it just, it goes against the comprehensive plan. One side note that I would like to make with respect to stormwater, we dispute the location of where that overflow pipe area would be without having the property line surveyed and sort of where the natural boundary lines are. We would say that that would be on these, or I'll call it the Gunning property here today. So, simply just in closing, I do want to reiterate one point that we, we tried to make clear in our closing arguments previous today. My clients are not against the development of this lot, as we've stated very clearly. What my clients desire are those of thoughtful development, one that takes into account their concerns, the commission's concerns, which were brought up at the March 25th hearing, and as well as the well-being of the community at large. We don't feel those concerns have been taken into consideration with these revised plans, which is, is a disappointment to us. As such, we actually request this hearing be continued again so that we can try to work something with the developer in terms of the management plane, plan that is before you as well as, in the hopes that our initial concerns would be addressed, you know, get us more comfortable with what they intend to do with my clients' backyards. So, again, we just simply request that this be continued to the next month. Thank you. And now, if my clients may come up and speak.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, any questions?
Any questions of?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Missouri.
So, can you walk me through that again about the calculations? I understand, obviously, backing out the right-of-way area from the gross. So, you've got the net. And then, what else were you backing out?
The open space area.
And why would you back that out of a PUD?
Why would I back it out of the PUD? It's not a buildable space. So, to, and it's not defined in the code how they can sort of calculate the acreage that is buildable on it. And when you take up, you can't build on a lake and you can't build on this slippage. So, what, you're left with 3.7 acres by backing it out.
Okay, we'll just agree to disagree on that point. Thank you.
Understood. It just promotes single clustered housing when you make lots this completely this small.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, the clients?
Yes.
One at a time. Again, please state your name, address.
Hi, I'm Jim Essendon Dewey. I'm at 7485 Ginger Lane. We are adjacent to the property and share the pond with the Gunning property. And a month ago, I just raised my concern about the fact that we had a prop, pond maintenance agreement that had lapsed, that we had not had any discussions or an agreement on a new pond maintenance agreement. Since that time, as Mr. Gunning pointed out, we have had multiple discussions and have had multiple turns of a document. You know, as of just this last Friday, I feel like we've made some real progress on that. But I disagree that, that we're, you know, imminently going to sign that. There are still some material items that we need to define and, and agree on and could make a significant difference. I mean, you know, for example, contrary to what we had in place before, we are now being asked to enter into engagements with an engineering firm, a lake maintenance firm, and a firm that would contract to do sedimentation removal. So, not necessarily bad ideas, but certainly would be a liability for the, for the three parties. We do want to reach an agreement on this pond maintenance agreement in form. It, it is very important to us. It will govern the, the maintenance, the recreation, the usage, and how the pond looks overall. And so, I, I absolutely want to get to an agreement on it. We just do need some additional time to do that. And, you know, regardless of what the draft looks like today, it's, it's changed dramatically, I can tell you, from, from any time before last Friday. So, you know, if this moves forward tonight, you know, I question what the final form of that looks like. And if we do have a vote on it, so I would just ask that it's conditioned upon a execution of a, of a pond maintenance agreement that's satisfactory to the, to the parties. Thank you.
Monica Essendon Dewey, 7485 Ginger Lane. Can I show you some pictures? Is that okay to do?
Sure.
Okay. So, I just want to walk you through. The first picture is my view of 7488 Clough, in case you haven't come out to look. The second picture is if you're on the proposed development site looking at the two houses, the Lipwich House and the Essendon Dewey House, that are on the pond. Lipwich is a little hard to see. It's on the left behind the trees. The third picture I took of two houses in the Bloomfield Hills neighborhood. They are on .3 acres of land. And I think they're similar to what the A2 zoning looks like. And as I mentioned before, before buying our house, I called the zoning department and my expectation is what across from the pond would be, from, from us would be A2 zoning. Picture four is a picture of some houses at Patterson Trails. A couple of us met with Paul Jury and we were asking about similar properties. And he had recommended we look at Patterson Trails. And if this PUD is approved, there will be eight of those houses on the pond across from us. Thank you.
Hi, my name's James Caddy and I live at 7461 Ginger Lane. At the end of the last meeting, I was pleased that so many of my fellow neighbors had come forward to speak about their concerns with the PUD at 7488. I was pleased that we were heard and I was pleased that the commission shared some of those concerns. It felt like a more agreeable middle ground was going to come to fruition. However, I was deeply shocked to see what was resubmitted as a result. The issues that I and many others raised have not been addressed in any meaningful or tangible way. So, I still stand by them and imp... or tangible way, so I still stand by them and implore the commission to stand by their concerns. I was shocked that no additional information has been provided around the year-round screening and the planting that was previously mentioned. Is there any additional planting beyond the eight evergreens? Is there any further clarification around whether any trees currently on seven four eight eight are going to be left standing? It doesn't look like it. Is something in place so that the trees last longer than the time required to get the PUD passed? Will dead or damaged trees be replaced? Will there be sensible rules to stop the removal of trees post-development? There just doesn't seem to be any detail to be judged on. I was also shocked at the elevation drawings for the product on offer. If you touch, search for terms like empty nesters online, it comes back with information about downsizing, smaller two-bedrooms, single-level living, sometimes with a basement, with sizes mostly in the one thousand to two hun, two thousand square feet range. As discussed last month, many of the lot sizes in the PUD are less than half the minimum size that the current zoning permits. We contested that these revised lots would not fit with the existing family homes surrounding the development, but it was pointed out by the commission that there was a need for empty nester homes in the township, and this was the primary reason why the PUD in principle was being considered. Yet here we are now looking at homes being placed on these tiny lots, being up to fifty percent larger than any of the nearby family homes. The lots are drastically smaller and the homes are considerably larger, with the largest on offer being three thousand six hundred square feet. How can multi-level homes up to three thousand six hundred square feet be considered empty nester material? How can it be okay to scale down the lot sizes yet scale up the homes on these lots? This compounds all the issues that we have raised. These are for all intent and purpose, large family homes on minuscule lots. Based on this, the empty nester aspects of this PUD are severely lacking in substance. If this PUD is given the go-ahead based on a need for empty nester housing and it does not end up in their hands, it will be an irreversible failure for the township and the surrounding neighbors. Thank you.
Carl Lipwich, seven four eight seven Ginger Lane, twelve-year resident of the pond, forty-year resident of Anderson Township, and I had something prepared for this evening, which got thrown out the window by some of the comments that Mr. Gunning made, so I'm going to just go ahead and sort of go off the cuff here, I need my reading glasses, to be able to read the initial agreement that Mr. Gunning sent to us. And the reason why we haven't finished the lake agreement is because the, his first rendition is, again, we've lived there twelve years, we like the natural look of the pond, we don't have any issues with the way the pond is right now. I can understand why if somebody was trying to sell a lot to somebody that was fifteen feet from some pretty nasty areas of the pond, they might have concerns. I don't have them. So this is what he proposed to us in his initial agreement. The cleaning and removal of sedimentation shall be initiated with Gunning when, when in his discretion, such action is necessary. Gunning shall forward invoices to the remaining parties for a third of the costs associated with such cleanup, and should the remaining parties fail to remit payment to Gunning for the share of the expenses upon thirty days' notice, then Gunning shall, in his discretion, place, place a lien against the real property of the remaining parties who agree that such action is reasonable and therefore consistent with the placing of such liens. Maybe that's why we don't have an agreement signed here tonight, guys. That's where we started, and we're not done yet. He's, to his credit, he's made progress, but it's not finalized. And so I am going to stick with the final sentence that I was going to read tonight. It, it's bizarre to me that, I mean, as one of the residents spoke at the last meeting, that we would actually like to see this property developed, it's been a nuisance. There was a, there's been a beer pong table up there forever, teenagers go up there and drink. You know, there's prophylactics hanging in the trees, people go up there for nooners. I've seen it all, I've got teenage daughters, and I've had to endure it all, okay? I've given Mr. Gunning suggestions on changes he might be able to make to gain our support. We've now wasted countless hours on this incomplete and irresponsible proposal. It's my sincere hope that the zoning committee will vote on this, this evening and vote against it. By doing so, I hope it sends a message to developers everywhere that Anderson welcomes development, especially by developers with serious complete plans who take current residents' concerns into account. This is the third time we've been up here for this. It's crazy to me. I want to see it developed. Why can't we come to an agreement? It's not that difficult, I'm pretty reasonable. Thanks for your time. Okay, please, please, address any and all comments to the commission only. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Pamela Janson, I live at twenty-one twenty-one Wolfangle, which is the corner of Clough and Wolfangle where it meets. And I have addressed before about this creek condition, but I have new developments that are happening, and I need this to be taken care of immediately because this is affecting my property in a drastic way. The, the damming is the first thing, because all this debris from where this creek has gone out of control and has become a ravine in a lot of parts, is no longer a creek, but all this debris from the trees that are falling in because of the land erosion are washing down to the creek and they're ending up beside my house, which is diverting this creek out of its right-of-way by ten to fifteen feet at a two-foot level that is eroding my property now, and it's causing damage to my property. There's also, as I was down there cleaning up some of it, trying to do it myself, after I've asked people to come and help me, I have discovered that there's now a creamy yellow-white foam coming out down here into the creek and it's settling, it, it right next to my house. And I don't know what it is, but it's disgusting. And I actually went down to remove some of the debris, what I could, to get it to flow past, and, but this is going into the Clough Pike tributary from this creek. And it's also, all the rocks that I, and the riprap that I have put in there over the years to try to control the creek, those are now a black, oily black, disgusting color. And it's not washing off, whatever it is, it's, it's nasty. And this is coming out of a recent development of what's going on. And I also, at the base of my driveway, right be, you know, before it comes into Clough Pike, I have two walnut trees that are pulling out of the ground on Mr. Gunning's side of the right-of-way. It's in the right-of-way, but these two trees are now pulling out of the ground and they're actually, the stumps are coming up already. And these are about forty to fifty-foot trees, and one of them is falling into another walnut tree, which is causing them both, they're going to fall on my driveway. And they're falling into where my parking area is when I have guests, and they, you know, park in that area over there, and if one of them falls, or both of them fall, we got a problem. So I need this taken care of immediately. This damming is serious on this property, and I don't want my property damaged anymore. So they need to take care of it.
Yes, I think, you know, you need to speak with the current owners of the pond.
I have spoke with two of them. Mr. Gunning's reaction was, yes, he would like to take care of it with some riprap and stuff, but the debris in there is what's actually causing a big part of the problem for it to divert, divert the creek. So he said he can't do anything about it because you stopped him from doing any development on the property, so he can't concern himself with that issue. And I've already addressed it with one of the other property owners of the lake, and so far, nothing's been done, and it's getting worse. Like last Saturday, when we had this horrible downpour that came down, looked like somebody opened up a swimming pool and dropped it, that was incredible that night because the rise of the creek just got drastic and it just totally flooded my, my whole side of my house. So I don't know what else to do other than complain about it.
All right.
So.
Thank you very much.
That's it, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition?
Yes, sir. Good evening, I'm Mark Owen Brink, I'm at two one two seven Wolfangle. It's on the north, or yeah, it's on the east side, southeast side, really, of the picture behind here. You can see. So I'm glad to hear some of the progress being made here. There's, there was a lot of issues, it sounds like, uh, some of them, some of them are getting some traction. I just want to call to your attention a couple that I didn't hear being, getting any attraction, at least so far, and make sure we're not forgetting about them. One being, you know, when you mix extreme topography with significant excavation, bad things can happen. Not that they always do, but bad things can happen. And, you know, just doing a rough look around surrounding properties here, roughly thirty units surround this development, we're looking at maybe ten million dollars of assets surrounding this thing. You know, who's, who's going to put up the insurance bond to make sure that if we have structural damage on some of those ten million dollars of assets, we're covered? Haven't heard anything about that. And then the other one was utilities, we, we really haven't talked much about utilities, but there was an issue with septic, there was an issue with gas coming into the development, perhaps, perhaps the developer would wish to address that. But my understanding was the only gas main nearby here is on the other side of Clough. Are we going to close Clough Pike to trench it? I, I don't know what's going on there. I think more realistically, we're probably looking at coming downstream from the corner of Clough and Wolfangle, so that's going to impact some people there, and who's going to work out that impact? Haven't heard anything there. So a couple of things to keep in mind, because, just because I haven't heard any update on that so far tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes.
Hello, I'm Guy Wolfe, I'm at six thousand one Stirrup Road. I'm speaking against this proposal because it does not adequately provide for visual and acoustic privacy along Clough Pike, nor for the future residents in the properties in this proposed development. Mr. Jury, may I ask, can we bring up the, the photo looking southeast? I think that's east, there's a, that's the one. Looking southeast. Everywhere else along Clough, when there's new development going in, the builder allows for a much more significant backset or setback from the roadway than is being proposed here. That, along with landscaping, provides a buffer and preserves the visual beauty along Clough Pike. That's not being proposed here. That may be voluntary in some cases, or partially voluntary, but again, this is a PUD, and so there's some negotiation and trade-off on that. And I would ask that the township prevail upon the builder, our potential future neighbors, to consider that in this proposal. There are four units, units number one, two, eighteen, and nineteen, that are on that very steep slope that comes up from Clough Pike. And by avoiding building at that location, the additional setback combined with the elevation would allow the township to preserve that natural beauty all along Clough Pike. So my, my request is that, that we make that part of the proposal. We brought that up at the last session, but that's not addressed, either positively or negatively, it's, it's still in the current proposal to add those four. And, and as we know, the, the PUD is a, a mathematical arrangement of numbers of houses allowed, and I think that this needs to be part of that consideration to preserve that corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's John Grove, I live at seven four nine five Ginger Lane, which is on the north end of the pond. Uh, I've lived there for sixteen years with my wife, Deborah. I'm going to recount some zoning regulations, which you folks all know, but a PUD shouldn't be approved if it show, unless it's without detriment to the neighboring, uh, the neighbors. And that's clearly not the, the case here. A PUD, PUD should not be considered unless the net density is equal to or less than that permitted in the existing zoning district. The PUD includes one acre for open space, which is a pond, that should be taken out, it should not be included, that would reduce the number of nineteen homes. The other open space, which is essentially undevelopable, undevelopable, should also be taken out. Under four point one G, it does not meet the requirements of the Anderson Township Comprehensive Plan. Under point four, the size and physical features of the project area do not enable adequate protection of surrounding property. On number eight, there is no evidence that the PUD is warranted. They have not submitted a plan according to the zoning requirements for A-two and B, for the zoning commission to compare to, and have made no arguments why the PUD should be accepted because they're, because they are, it's detrimental to their interests. In fact, I'm not aware of any plan that they've done according to zoning requirements, they just came in with the PUD. Under number ten, they have nineteen homes clustered with insufficient spatial barriers to allow for landscaping, there's no adequate provisions for vis, visual or acoustic privacy. Number eleven, there is no appropriate open space, there's no space for walking trails, I think you had asked that before. These homes are clustered in there, there is no place to walk. In fact, if you look at their, their plan, and here's a blow-up, the blue is the, the floor plan of their sixty-five by forty-foot houses, ten feet in between, the green would be a ten-foot walkway, and the green would be the space by the pond, which is about what your, uh, the deus there is back to the wall. So finally, there's no evidence that the, the PUD is warranted. So what you're left with is this, how do you balance this? And the way you do it is you enforce the zoning laws in effect, the zoning laws for A-two and B. Those are designed to protect the current residences. And then we don't have a complaint because you're following the zoning, the zoning laws. And what does that mean for the developer? It means they're left with four acres of prime developable land in Anderson Township on a pond, they can put seven homes on the A-two district and six homes on the B district, that's thirteen homes that they can develop. They can certainly develop that, that gives a sufficient buffering for the rest of the residences, and it allows everyone to meet a common ground. They do not need a PUD of nineteen houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
My name is Prent Hollenbeck, I live at two two six two Breton Drive, I'm pretty much the left side of your drawing up there, I have more frontage onto this property than anyone else, I think. Green space is not the same, the spacing between homes, as people have spoken about here. But last time, it was brought up that these retirees, who will all be living there, don't want to mow lawns, and the green space would be mowed by the HOA. However, there should be a few fewer homes for the reasons people have put forth, and it can be spacing between the houses, and that too, could be mowed by an HOA. So there's no reason not to at least try to accommodate, and yes, this is very much personal for me, because my home is going to be closer to the upper or the left half of these homes than it is to any other home right now. My home will essentially be part of this housing development as far as the feel of the, and character of my lot. And I really urge you to try to make this new development at least fit in to the plan, at least try to accommodate some spacing between these houses, because it's going to look extraordinarily jarring for my home. And I think the zoning should be more in effect. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
I'm at 2256 Breton Drive. I too have also been here, all this, the third meeting here. On a couple of the meetings, it was pointed out how we don't have much housing here in Anderson for our quote-unquote seniors, empty nesters, et cetera. But oddly enough, in our Anderson Township Insight Magazine, it pointed out some of the newer enclaves at Woodruff that's going to have a 34-unit offering for luxury housing for ranch patio homes. I don't know how that's going to fit in with Woodruff, but this cluster housing, or whatever you want to call this development, does not fit in any surrounding development, period, of, of, at least an easy five miles of where this place is. So, I am in agreement with pretty well what the opposition has said, and I just wanted to state that again.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Seeing no hands, if the applicant would like to address any of the comments that they've heard tonight?
I guess concerning the landscape and buffering and tree removal, as part of the construction plans, we can obviously show which trees are going to be saved, once the grading is finalized. As far as buffering, we can supply a landscape plan as part of the construction plans to meet the township requirements as far as supplementing some of the, the areas. On Lot 13, Ms. McBride, you talked about the grading there. That can be pulled back to adequately save the trees along the property line on, on Lot 13. Very little grading on 11 and 12 in the rear of those lots, and on the side of Lot 12, as far as that's concerned.
Thank you. Pat, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, just one more thing, Pat Gunning. One more thing in regard to the lake maintenance agreement. The first attempt at a lake maintenance agreement was all of, I'll give all the credit to my attorney, and he forwarded on, and I pushed the button and forwarded on, and didn't look at it. And it's never been my intent to have that type of wording in that document. And if you look at the document, the way it's, the way it reads currently, I think it's in full cooperation of the other two neighbors. And, you know, I want to try to make everything that is an issue better by having this project go. And the dam is definitely an issue, and that we will fix it and make it right so that there is no more flooding down below at Pam and Mark's house. And if, you know, we all went up there and walked the entire path there, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of problems going on. And I think we can really fix it and make it better, and never be a problem again, unless we have 200-year-old drains, so. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no additional from the audience, we'll close the public hearing and discuss amongst the commission. So, Mr. Henson, we'll start with you, please.
One thing that I probably should have asked earlier, and I forgot, I thought we addressed or talked about the last meeting, internal sidewalk network, and I'm not seeing that on the plan. Can you just refresh my memory on whether there is an interior or an internal sidewalk network? I know we discussed along Clough, and that we were going to add it along.
There'll be sidewalks on both sides of the street, for the entire street, and then a sidewalk on Clough, per Mr. Drury's recommendation, towards Wolfangle, over the property line.
Is, and this sort of gets to the same issue that we keep bringing up with regard to the landscaping plan. It's not shown on the plan, and this is the plan that we're approving, and it's still an existing hurdle that I think we're, I'm going to have difficulty leaping tonight.
The, the typical section that's shown on the plan, I believe, shows a sidewalk on both sides of the street. You know, the sidewalk along Clough, that can definitely be a condition that, that we will put that in.
Thank you.
Ms. McBride?
Yeah, sorry.
I guess, Paul, can I ask you one question? Would, can Mountain County Public Works have anything to do with Ms. Janson's problems? Would they?
I don't know where the issues are. If it's not within the right-of-way, then no. Most likely, it's going to be a private issue.
All right, that was just a thought that I had. You know, I feel comfortable with the, the engineering and with Alton Witzig. I mean, they're both, Abercrombie and Alton Witzig are both, you know, very reputable firms. I guess, I have a couple of, of concerns, and one to play off of my fellow commissioner here to my left, is I understand that that may very well be the intent of the developer to preserve that 10 feet and to supplement it with landscaping, but if we don't see it, then it's not necessarily required, if we were to act on this plan this evening. And is it required by the zoning code? No, but what they're proposing isn't permitted by the zoning code either, unless this PUD is put into place. So, as I mentioned before, there, there are trade-offs to this, and, and I don't, I agree, I couldn't act on this tonight without knowing how some of these other items are going to be addressed. The other thing that I'm a little concerned about is the ability to utilize the lake that is on their property. What I heard the applicant say was that they, at least for the first 12 months, these residents weren't going to be allowed to fish, or, I guess they're never allowed to swim, but to fish or to kayak, or to, you know, get out onto their portion of the water. And that, to me, was something that I thought, right, well, if they have the lake and they're able to use it, then that really is usable open space. But I thought it was kind of interesting. I'd like to try kayaking. But at any rate, so I'm, I'm very disappointed to learn that they're, they're not going to be able to use that, and whether or not, then, that does constitute usable open space. So I guess, you know, somebody brought up a good point about, you know, how, how do things look from Clough and so forth. So I, I guess, my thought is, I, you know, I hate to continue something again, but I give them one more shot, you know, kind of thing. And that's just my, my opinion, my thought.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Thanks. You know, the idea of the lake maintenance agreement is, is well good and all, and don't know if that will get to agreement, maybe mediation or something like that. But I'm more concerned with the, the density and the lot size, and the purpose of the PUD, PUD, and, you know, without detriment to the neighboring properties. I don't think we're there at this point. It's just they're, it's too much, too much and too little of a space for me, so.
Thank you. And I will, I guess, add on to the things, the lack of detail that we have now to approve a plan that has substantial, you know, ramifications to this area, really is hard for, in my opinion, me to make a decision. So, you know, we can entertain a motion at this point in time, either to continue or a motion in any other direction if the commission member would like to make that motion, it'd be well, well received on our side.
I just also want to add, probably don't want to scapegoat myself too much here and be unclear about the fact that, you know, it's not just the stuff that's missing on the plan that is necessarily the problem. I'm encouraged by the progress you've had with the homeowners with regard to the homeowners' association. It seems like you're making significant progress finding that middle ground. With regard to this plan, there was very minimal material differences between this plan and the other plan, and it does still not seem to warrant a PUD overlay. The underlying zoning there, you know, is much more compatible with the, the surrounding community, and when you overlay this onto the existing aerial, just, you know, looking at Google Maps, you can, and I wish we had that here because it does tell quite a story. And I just do want to make it clear that my concerns have a lot more to do with the plan and less with the fact that we don't have all of the information, so that I don't want you to be misled that that's my only reservation. Thank you.
Well, gentlemen, what are, what are you thinking? I mean, do you think that if we continue this again, that they are hearing what we're saying about not just material that's missing, but, you know, perhaps the density to this?
A continuance with no change in the density, I wouldn't be happy with.
Well, I, I don't know that we can ask them that at this point in time. I mean, they need to perhaps go back and crunch numbers and...
Then my first movement would be to deny.
Rather than to give them a chance to, to continue it.
Yes.
And, you know, I guess I was expecting a little bit more in this meeting from the discussions we had last meeting. You know, I think there was a lot of requests or information that was requested, that really we got the same plan back with, you know, maybe an agreement that was, you know, presented at the, at the meeting. So, you know, there wasn't a lot of progress in the last month, from the last meeting, from my applicant, to provide some additional information that we spoke about and requested.
And your thought about continuing or...
I'd be willing to continue, to, you know, see that additional information, to make a just decision at that time.
I'm willing to continue it. I think we've already been down that road. Sort of a minor discrepancy. I'll wait for a motion.
So, anyone brave enough to make a motion? Everyone looks at the end.
Everybody looks at the end. Isn't that fun? Well, I guess, in, in the spirit of hope that maybe some kind of additional thought could be put into this plan, in terms of the density and details and so forth, I would make a motion that we continue Case 4, 2019, PUD, Clough Chase, 7488, Clough Pike.
Do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Can you call roll, please?
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
So as far as feedback for the applicant, density was a concern, landscaping, what trees would be left on the site, which would be removed on the site, what other guidance can we give them?
Well, I think how it interrelates with their surrounding neighbors. And that would include, you know, Clough Pike as well, in my opinion.
Agreed. Okay, thank you.
So we'll take a very brief recess while we're making electronic...